This is the caucus meeting of April 11th, 2024. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the seal chief flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I introduce the Rotary is here tonight to make a donation, a special donation to our town. Thank you.
No, 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 no.
He doesn't want to take it off.
He broke the mic last time, somebody did. We're not going to move you around.
That was weird. Sorry about that. Not hearing me. Go right ahead.
Yeah?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, committee members, administration, and all of you. My name is William Resavino and I'm here representing a group of Rotarians from the Fork River Rotary. We're very pleased to be here tonight to give a check, but I'll get to that in a minute because I think there's some things we should mention before.
Appreciate it.
We can only do these things that we do annually because of the generosity of the people in the Lacey community. They're the ones who come to our functions, enable us to raise the money to do the different things that we do, that we do do. We do do. Okay. That sounds great. Okay. All right. What I'd like to say, we just finished up yesterday going over the scholarship awards, and we're going to be meeting our goal annually as we have for so many years of giving out $20,000 in scholarships.
Isn't that fantastic?
And that's something we're very proud of doing for the kids in the community. There are so many programs that we do. We do to raise money. We do the Go For The Goal, the Autumn Windfall. We do the Doggy Derby. We have a bunch of different activities that we do. If we didn't do these things in our community to raise the funds, we couldn't possibly do and give back to the community. All right? 10 years ago was our 40th anniversary and the club gave, and I'm holding the paper because I get, I was told by the group, if I get the numbers wrong, I have to personally make up the difference. So I want to make sure that I do it right. We donated $40,000 at that time to upgrade the park, Hebrew Park, correct?
Yes.
And that was something that we did. This year, it's our 50th anniversary 10 years later, and we're going to be giving a check today for $30,000 to go toward the renovation or replacement of the digital sign that's on Manchester and Haines. And there's something else we want to bring up, which is very important to us. We're going to be giving at the next Board of Ed meeting, a $20,000 check to keep going some of the programs that they've initiated as far as mental health programs in the schools. So we feel that that's great.
Yes, it is.
Not to prolong it and not to do it like an advertisement, but we encourage people to go to our new website, forkinriverroastery.org, and that'll give a list of all the functions we do, all the things that we do in the community, because I could only list a few in this few minutes. I thank you.
No, thank you. We really appreciate all of your help and all of your support.
Did I tell you you have to bring a check if you hold?
Yes. You hold.
Oh Jim, you're going to get a picture for me?
I'm standing where I can.
Rotarians, let me all come up.
Yes, it's going to help me handle this here. Everybody, if you can.
Veronica?
Yes.
Veronica, do you want me to take it?
How are you?
Jim from the club is going to take it, then I'll have to share it with me. I'm in here. You have to get in front. Your shoulder's in there. Okay, man. Can you get us all in? Is it good?
Everybody's in there?
No, we got to move closer together.
They can't see me. Veronica's head. Oh, you have good ears. No, it's okay. I want you to block. I'm good with it.
Thank you. You want to get it?
No.
She's espousal of a Rotarian, which is just as important. More important. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Everybody. I was just going to say. Did they have the real check yet? At the dinner, wasn't it? Hey Paul. 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 Yes, that goes over well.
Like you broke with all the wires.
I didn't have quotes in yet, but I can write one.
I got it. So you're giving, yeah, so my quote is, my quote is $33,000 something, $392,000. So I only need $30,000.
Yeah, that's what I understand. Well, I can get it. Are you, you'll be there next Tuesday?
I'm going to attempt to be.
Okay, well, if you're there any hour.
Put a sign on there, do not touch.
Do you like to comment?
You know, time and time again.
Stay back 300 feet.
Listen, you know, excuse me Rotary, we'd like to thank you.
We'd like to thank you. If you'd just settle down, you're a rough bunch. You know, I categorize you as the usual suspects. It's people like you, the Elks, the Moose, who keep on coming and helping this township over and over again. And you said it, it's, you bring the people of Lacey together. You've been a great organization for as long as I've been here. And when did the Rotary in Fork River start?
50 years ago.
50 years? Well, okay.
Were you paying attention to it?
1973. It was actually March of 73.
1973, okay. So I've been down here for 40 years, so yes, it's an amazing organization. Some are the same people, a lot of new people, and it's great. Thank you for all you do, and I look forward to seeing you do more. Thank you.
And to think that back in the early 90s, we provided, we as in the Rotary, provided $60,000 towards the playground equipment in Gilly Park, and the township matched the other $60,000. So you're at 120, and just what, a year or two go, we replaced the same playground for $600,000. The price has risen.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So Veronica stole a little bit of my fire. And my daughter, who is an adult now, and I'm a little sad about that because some of our great memories were at the park that was made possible by our Rotary when she was a little girl. We would put her on the rides and, you know, just play catch and do all the nice things. But when I was there with then-young parents, as I am not young anymore, there was just never even a small complaint. And we're talking about specifically Rotary Park at Hebrew Park. It's a wonderful place for young moms and dads, guardians to be with their kids. And so you're not supposed to have favorites. If I say I have a favorite in town, I get my mailbox full and maybe upset some of our Elks, some of our Moose, some of our other civic organizations, but you're a fine group of people. And some of you I know really personally and I know really well. You're a value add for the town. Personally and professionally grateful for you. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo some of the same comments. I said Rotary is invaluable to Lacey Township. We've always considered you like a partner to the town. The amount of things that you've done for the township over the years, it's too many to list. So really thanks for all the service you guys do. I know there's a lot of the same members that have been there for years, so it's always good to see the same faces. So thank you very much.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I have always said that our volunteer organizations make this town great. And you can say who leads the town, I don't know, but I can tell you there's Rotary right there. They do so much for this town. And without your guys' donations and so forth, this town is nowhere near what it is today. So I thank you and I wish you nothing but the best of luck in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I take it personal because I love all of you. I see you all the time, whether it's at the gym or the restaurant or the donuts or whatever we're doing. I see all of you out there, senior lunches, you know, you're quite the group, and we're very fortunate to have you and very fortunate for what you're giving back to this town. We're the lucky ones and there's just, you know, a thank you just isn't big enough to say it, but we do appreciate everything you do. And thanks for coming here and sharing that check with us. I appreciate that. So have a great night. Thank you, guys.
Veronica, did you want to have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, good.
Past Rotary president, Veronica LaRae.
There's several past Rotary presidents in the room.
Yes, there is.
And also a Rotarian, and we're having your wife, Margaret, a Rotarian.
Yes, she is.
Isn't that wonderful? Yep.
And then we have a new Rotarian, come on board, young Chris Connors.
Do they really have?
I was distinguished from.
Very good, very good. When you said this, quick thinking. As soon as you said the young word, you were in trouble, Tony. I'm just telling you, okay?
Thank you, Tony.
We want to thank you for electing us.
Thank you, very proud of you. Thank you.
Yes, very. The funny thing is, is I saw him and I said, I know who he is. And I'm like, but I didn't like realize at first that he joined. And I said, oh, isn't that wonderful? So now he's involved in it. Yep, now you'll have more reasons to still be around us. You can't get away from us, that's for sure.
Soon be the president.
Yes. Before you know it, it'll happen, that's for sure. In two years.
This is the meeting, the baby voted in.
You know what they say, don't make eye contact, okay? Don't make eye contact, that's for sure.
Not while I'll just scratch your head at a meeting.
No. Thanks so much, all of you. I really appreciate it. Okay, and we have another group here. It's called the Preferred Behavioral Health, and I'm going to have the deputy mayor introduce both of you to us, please.
Mayor, thank you very much. And so tonight, I thought it was important, after speaking with the mayor and attending the Traumatic Loss Coalition School Presentation a couple of weeks ago, one of the organizations there, well, actually the primary organization, was Preferred Behavioral Health. So tonight, I wanted to afford them a few minutes behind the microphone. They came here from several towns away. They've been partners in trying to help our schools. They have experienced some serious loss, our schools have. So Dr. Tara Chalakani is the Chief Executive Officer of Preferred Behavioral Health. Quite frankly, one of the most credentialed and impressive people I've ever met, and I've met a lot of people in public health. Val Ortens is the VP of Strategic Development. Val is here as well. And I wanted to have them here tonight to just talk about, you know, some of the items that they're coming across. And full disclosure, I have no commercial interest in Preferred Behavioral Health, and that's fair to say. But in speaking with the mayor, I thought it was important that they come here tonight, especially after being part of that important presentation on traumatic loss in our schools. We've had some serious tragedies. These are extremely licensed and credentialed people from a very regulated organization slash agency. So Dr. Chalakani, if you could come up to the microphone and speak for just a couple of minutes on some of the items that you're seeing and some of the services that you may offer.
Jason, you have?
Yes.
Pardon my back, everyone. Good evening. As deputy mayor said, I'm Dr. Tara Chalakani, CEO of Preferred Behavioral Health Group and also an alumna of Lacey Township High School.
Oh, all right. I know that.
A success story. But I'm here tonight to give my heartfelt sympathy to the township of Lacey. You've suffered so much tragedy this school year, and we feel very privileged to be on the front lines, helping the community, helping families and students. We've been able to do that this year through generous funding through the state of New Jersey. The Department of Children and Families has awarded us grant monies to provide all public schools in Ocean County, K through 12, with mental health and prevention services. The funding is called NJ4S, and we have named our county Compass, Connecting Ocean Mammoth Partnership Student, Assisting Student Services. Pardon me for not getting that 100% correct. But with that funding, we are able to support all of your schools at any time. So I encourage everyone to visit our website, www preferredbehavioral.org. We have programming at the ready to support all of your students and families. And we also have a program which Valerie Ortens, my vice president, is going to share with you that provides 24-hour service, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And before I have her come up, I just want to share that we provide these intensive services to Ocean County, to over 2,000 youths per year, age 0 to 21. 10% of those youths are from Lacey Township. And of the calls that we are dispatched for on a monthly basis, half are related to suicide, whether it be thoughts, plans, intentions. But this is a serious issue. It has only escalated since the pandemic. And I just encourage anyone that has children in their lives or parents of children, if you notice your children not acting themselves or making comments, take them seriously. Because we take them seriously when they complain of something physical, we have to do the same when it's something mental. Mental and physical health are the same. So I thank you for your time. I'm going to pass the mic to my colleague to offer another resource.
If I can interrupt for just one second, just to say how lucky we are to have you coming to our schools during this horrendous time that we've been living through. And we're grateful. And whether or not the folks out there realize how much you've been at our schools day in and day out from day one, we're very fortunate and we appreciate it very much.
And we're happy to do it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, deputy mayor, for having us here and inviting us and for everyone's time and listening ears. So I'll echo a little bit further what Dr. Chalakani has said, that right now, more than ever, our youth are in need of support and a listening person in their life. And Preferred is fortunate enough to have many listening ears. We have 350 staff at our company. And the program that Dr. Chalakani alluded to is Mobile Response. It's called Children's Mobile Response. We are the sole provider of that in Ocean County. So we service the entire county. It's funded by DCF. And it's a phenomenal program that dispatches crisis response to the home or at a safe location in the community to de-escalate any type of crisis that involves mental health, behavioral health, and sometimes substance use in the moment. And the clinicians go out as a team. They either enter the home or wherever they're at in the community, de-escalate, and then wrap around services for eight weeks, the entire family. So they have free access to mental health support, family counseling, group services, and then a warm handoff to further assistance thereafter if needed. So this is a great resource that you can access at any time, 24/7, 365. And the number to call to reach them is 877-652-7624. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Really appreciate it. The information is important to be out there, and that's why we wanted you here, so people know that we here in Lacey are struggling along with you and with our children. And we wanted to make sure that, you know, it's recognized that we have this help and this opportunity for people to reach out.
And there's information here that we'll leave at our desks here, where our employees and our colleagues are. If anybody from the town wants to come in and pick it up or look at it or search, research the website, as our colleagues, Dr. Chalakani and Ms. Ortens have said, please feel free to do that. And just wanted to say thank you again for the work you're doing in our schools. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, Preferred Behavioral Health also supplies us with our employee assistance program. And they offer services out for that as well.
Isn't that wonderful? Thank you.
Besides her being an alumni from Lacey, her father is a retiree from Lacey.
Is that right?
Yes, yes.
Police department.
Police department. Eddie Olbries was her, is her father.
Oh. Yes. Well, thank you. Double thank you. Double thank you. That's.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Safe ride home now.
Okay.
Item number three.
Resolution 2024-112, resolution in the township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the convening of an executive session in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Move it. Second.
All in favor? We need to go into executive session to discuss a matter that.
Don't you have to state if you have the reasons why she didn't pay a bill? For matters of personnel, contractual matters, pending litigation, and real estate.
Okay.
We'll be back out. There might be something we need to add on to the agenda that we have to discuss first.
Township, excuse me. Township meeting statement. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please stand for the salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance 2024-6, amending Chapter 185 to revise certain regulations in the coastal and flood zone areas.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 185 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey, entitled Flood Hazard Areas to Revise Certain Regulations in the Coastal and Flood Zone Areas.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-113, appointing Class 1 Special Officers.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Madison Noon and Joshua Witco Mooney as Special Ones Law Enforcement Officers.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-114, supporting the township's participation in the T-Mobile Grant.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, supporting the township's participation in the T-Mobile Hometown Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-115, authorizing the receipt of bids.
Move it.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the receipt of bids for various equipment and services in accordance with the approved 2024 budget for the Township of Lacey. We'll be going out to bid for road improvements to Sunrise Boulevard, road improvements for Cranberry Hill, dredging of Stout's Creek, and replacement of Bulkhead at the South Docks.
Move it.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-116, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-113, appointing Class 1 Special Officers.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Madison Noon and Joshua Witco Mooney as Special Ones Law Enforcement Officers.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-114, supporting the township's participation in the T-Mobile Grant.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, supporting the township's participation in the T-Mobile Hometown Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-115, authorizing the receipt of bids.
Move it.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the receipt of bids for various equipment and services in accordance with the approved 2024 budget for the Township of Lacey. We'll be going out to bid for road improvements to Sunrise Boulevard, road improvements for Cranberry Hill, dredging of Stout's Creek, and replacement of Bulkhead at the South Docks.
Move it.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-116, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-116, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-117, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, but I will abstain on any bills from T and M.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kiratola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
I have an add-in, an add-on, please. Resolution 2024-118, resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of surplus real property by open public auction in accordance with NJSA 40A:12-13.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kiratola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Monthly reports.
For the month of March, the Department of Community Development collected receipts in the amount of $37,893. Municipal docs were collected in the amount of $17,550 for the month of March. Road opening permits were collected in the amount of $2,025, recycling commodity in the amount of $1,564, and municipal truck parking collected in the amount of $10,000 for the Public Works Department. Municipal Clerks Office collected receipts in the amount of $11,815 for the month of March, and the Municipal Court for the month of February collected receipts in the amount of $14,622.60. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes from March 28, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Mr. Kiratola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve township minute meetings from March 28, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Kiratola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to approve executive session minute meetings from March 28, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Kiratola?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Okay, comments from the committee. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. We saw the presentation tonight. I want to commend Mayor Juliano for attending, and actually, I attended with her. She is the mayor and I'm the number two at the Traumatic Loss Coalition for our schools last, last, uh, two weeks ago.
About two weeks ago.
That was about two weeks ago. You know, very necessary and uncomfortable topic, but it was very important. It was important for the parents that were involved, important for the teachers, the counselors. In the old days, counselors would help a kid maybe choose a college, take the ASFAB, and go into the military, and now it's a plethora of things that young people may or may not be dealing with. So it's very important to have the level of licensure there to help kids at every, every level of our schools. Budget pretty much wrapped up. I was at a school board meeting earlier this afternoon. Schools are in a tough spot. Schools are in a very, very tough spot. I want to commend publicly the Ninth District for their steadfast support and multiple letters they have written. That's Senator Amato, Assemblyman Rumpf, Assemblyman Meyer, working with and speaking to people on this committee, having meetings with different school board representatives, as well as Superintendent Pereira. So we're doing the best that we can. It was very unfair, the way our schools have been treated. It's the largest budget deficit I have ever heard of, and I've been here 11 years, certainly not a senior person in the town, but on the committee, I've cut my teeth pretty well, and I have not heard anything remotely like the chasm. You know, sometimes there's ways to make two ends meet, and this is, uh, this is more Grand Canyon. So I want to pledge any support we can to our colleagues on the school board and those folks, but that's going to be a heavy, heavy road. I want to thank publicly again, as we all have done recently a few minutes ago, our rotary. But for them and their efforts, we don't have the things that we have in the town. So, and happy Easter, everyone. Mayor, your my comments for this evening.
Mr. Dykoff?
No comments this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kennis?
Yes, I'll be brief as well. It was, um, I was planning on talking about a number of changes that are coming down from the state of New Jersey mandates. They're very discouraging, and I actually don't feel quite like talking about them tonight, and I'm just going to leave it that. New Jersey has, is a very unfriendly business climate, and there's much too much government in New Jersey. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kennis. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I have been deep into 1040s and W2s and 1099R, so I, uh, all I will just say is this, your taxes are due monthly. They have to be, if you owe money, it has to be postmarked. If you don't have the time to file them, you can always file an extension. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I don't have much myself. I just want to remind everybody that this weekend on Saturday, first of all, we have the Lacey cleanup, this young lady that put together a group trying to get everybody out there to do like a cleanup in our, our town here, which is a wonderful idea. Appreciate it very much. Laura Elizabeth is her name. Also on, we have opening day for girls softball at 10 o'clock at Gilly Park, and 12 o'clock for the Lacey Little League over at Cloon Park. So it's a, it's going to be a busy day, lots of kids out and about, lots of families out and about. Everybody just slow down. And then on another note, on Saturday, June 8th, from 10 to 11, we will have our Free Rabies Clinic here back by the Public Works Building, just in case anyone is interested. Other than that, I'm going to open up the floor to the public. Anyone? Go right ahead.
Did you ever get asked not to touch the mic?
Right, they don't want us touching the mic. You can touch the bar.
There's the bar.
Twist that thing so it'll turn down for you?
Not?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I'm waiting for the.
Not, we don't want to hear you speak, it's just.
It got busted last meeting.
Regina De Senza, Sunrise Beach, Fork River.
Nope.
You got it.
Okay.
Okay. There was a very, very interesting discussion at the planning board meeting Monday night. So I had a couple of questions, but do you know if all the 400 homeowners of the riparian rights issue were like notified by the Elks eight years ago when they first?
When they first, if I may, when we were first notified eight years ago?
People did know.
They did know.
And, and so for eight years, it's been dormant?
Well, it was, it comes up and then it goes down, and it comes up and then it goes down again.
I mean, I found that to be the most fascinating discussion ever because like.
Had you not heard about it before, Mr. Senza?
Eight years ago I did, but the fascinating part is that no title company and nobody ever researched it to notice that until eight years ago, because I had done a similar deed search about Sunrise Beach like 20 years ago, and I found out the original deed restrictions were on my property, even though the builders sought to.
Differently.
Write new ones, but, you know, it was almost the same, but not exactly. And what the issue was when I researched mine was the side setbacks. We had, we were supposed to be 20 feet apart, and we ended up 12 feet apart. So that creates a lot of stormwater problems, but you know, no one's going to move 100 houses, so.
Right.
But it was just interesting to find out.
Very interesting.
The original deed from 55 did apply to my lot. Okay, so that was, like I said, the most interesting planning board meeting I'd been to in a long time, and then Mr. Brady's like, we're a land board, and you said it too, I think, Mr. Kennis. What are we doing here discussing water rights? And then the DEPs never checked, as everybody did stuff, and it's like just, I couldn't.
That's why Mr. Kennis and Mr. Reed both said.
So insane. I just cannot believe how that happened. Well, anyway, so I had to leave the last meeting early, and I heard on, I watched a YouTube video that you have pilot funds for the Cornerstone project, the one over here. Are there any other projects in town that have a pilot? I think Cornerstone's the only one.
I'm going to let Mr. Kennis handle that.
Or was it Heritage too?
I answered that, and it's only two. So it's Cornerstones, and then it's the apartment complex, Heritage at Lacey on Newark Avenue. There are no other pilots or tax abatement programs.
So Heritage, is it every single one of those apartments or just a portion?
It's the building, so yes, it's the building.
It is the whole thing is a pilot.
100% affordable building.
Oh, it is? Okay, that's what I wasn't sure of. I thought it was a portion. So if it's just those two, now are there any other anticipated out of the 486 new homes that are coming in? I believe the Ryan home was part of that.
It's just Walters and Heritage. There are no other ones anticipated. While Ryan's has affordable houses, they're affordable for sale, and they pay their fair share of taxes.
Right, okay, so that's.
No pilots.
And that doesn't apply to our affordable housing units, or does it?
It does apply towards our numbers, yes, it does.
Oh, okay.
But it, it's not on a pilot.
Right, okay, so it's paying taxes in full?
Yes, based on the sale value of the unit.
So now was there a, a total taxes discussed of what the pilot is for Cornerstone and Heritage together? I know it's minimal.
Yeah, I said it in the last meeting.
I don't have those numbers, but I don't know if you have those numbers with these.
I mean.
Because it comes up all the time.
And how old is Heritage?
I think 2005, 2006.
Sea Breeze is.
Oh, it's a lot older, the Heritage apartments than Cornerstone?
Cornerstone was 2017.
Oh, wow.
Sea Breeze is 90,000, Walters Phase 1 is 47,000, Phase 2 is 33,000.
That is minimal, but what I was going to ask is because, you know, none of that money goes to the school district, and we know what dire straits the school district is in at the current time. I was wondering if a few, few nickels could be scraped together from the pilot programs and some money be given to the school district. I'm not on the board anymore, none of them really come here, but when I heard that pilot funds could be given to the school district, I think it's time to maybe give them a few dollars.
Didn't we say?
If there's a way to earmark it.
Not to interrupt you, but this is from the last meeting, they, they, send a letter, request it, somebody from the board request it. And then we can't do it for the budget this year, our budget's finalized, but.
The budget is finalized, it's too late.
Yes, it's too late for this year.
And theirs has to be finalized.
They would get about 5% of that money.
About?
That's what the law says, 5%.
Oh, my God.
So and again, it, the, the amount fluctuates a few dollars each year.
That's seriously minimal, but.
Right. Yes, it is.
Even if you multiplied it by several years.
Well, I couldn't give them back years. That doesn't work that way, no. It doesn't work that way.
All right, I was just wondering about that because it was mentioned, and when I was on the board, someone did mention it to me, and I told them I didn't know how much exactly, and, you know, I just knew which projects were, but that was back in 2015, so that's a long water under the bridge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Got a gentleman. No, go ahead, sir. Is he, are you coming?
Are you coming, sir?
He's letting you.
Who's going?
Yes, he's telling you to go.
Who's going?
Go ahead. All right, how are you?
Carol Middlesdorff from Lenoka Harbor. The real property in that 118, what's the property?
Block 284, Lot 1.01. It's the community hall site. I'll leave that to the attorney.
It's a resolution authorizing the re-auction of the property which is located at the corner of Route 9 and Lacey Road.
Wasn't that supposed to happen a year ago?
Yes.
You were supposed to announce that before the sale or the auction a year ago?
Well, let me, let me finish, I'll explain it to you. When the property was originally auctioned, there was a resolution adopted by the governing body which set forth a minimum bid of $2.5 million. It authorized the online sale of the property.
2.9 million?
2.5, I think it was, was it?
2.9.
2.9, I'm sorry, 2.9, okay.
Okay.
So, and it authorized the online sale of the property.
Correct.
The statute requires that the publication be in a newspaper circulating within the municipality. It was done so for the original auction. There were no bidders at that auction.
Correct.
The auctioneer re-auctioned the property, and the minimum bid of $2.9 million was not advertised as such, and there was a bidder for $1.5 million. The governing body awarded a contract to that bidder, and it is now under contract. However, subsequently, it was determined that it was not published for the second August auction within the newspaper that the statute requires.
Don't you have to publish before an auction?
Yes.
Can I ask you, was that auction, or was that auction not a five-minute auction with one bidder?
No, it was 30 days. It was 30 days.
I have a record that says that was.
I have a record of when it was published and when it was, it was 30 days, while there was no bidder until the last day.
It said the auction opened at 8:30 something and ended at 8:42.
It was, I checked.
Paperwork from GovDeals.
She talked about the 1.5.
No, I checked with GovDeals because it was brought up, and it was 30 days.
Well, I would suggest to you that it's moot. I would suggest that it's moot because it wasn't published.
It was not published before the auction, I think it has to be published before, okay, so.
It always has to be published before the auction.
Understood, but it wasn't.
And that's what this resolution would correct.
How did it correct it a year later?
Now, it probably will result in a lawsuit from the individual who bid on it the last time.
Because we're re-advertising and we're republishing and we're re-auctioning it.
Okay.
So it's going through a new advertisement.
The GovDeal website screenshot taken in October says the auction was exactly five minutes with one bidder.
It really wasn't, it wasn't, because I don't.
That's what the records say.
That's neither here nor there.
Again, it's, it's moot.
Because we're going to go back out and publish.
I'm going to go on to a different topic, which is why I stood up. The Lacey Historical Society is holding a fundraiser, and the Joy of Angels Thrift Shop on Saturday, May 4th, everything that they're selling that day, the 50% of the proceeds will be going to the Lacey Historical Society, and I would love it if everybody participated, and it's a fun day, and it's a good cause, and it would be great. So that's May 4th between 10 and 4 p.m. at the Joy of Angels Thrift Shop.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Just your name, please.
Michael DeGeorge. So just so you guys know, I am the person that you're speaking about regarding the bid. I purchased this property in nothing but good faith a year ago. I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and now I'm in a position where you guys are taking the property away from me after nine months. I can't even really grasp it because I was in an understanding that this is the exact reason that we have contracts, and that I was protected by a township contract. There was a resolution read last summer, there was an adoption of the ordinance read last summer.
Excuse me, can I ask you, Mr., excuse me for a second, Mr., you, you need to address us, not the audience, okay?
I apologize. The, the resolution was read last summer, the adoption was read last summer. No one came out to fight this in any way. Seemingly nine months later, after I had spent my life savings, just so everyone knows, I'm not a big developer, I own a small real estate firm in Tom's River. After putting everything I could into this development and getting to a point where I had signed a deal with a potential tenant and was making an application to the township, all of the sudden at that point, you guys had said to me that there was a clerical error. So what my question is, is when the property goes back to bid, and there are, you know, someone had said to me months ago, someone who I trust very much in this town, a great guy, had said, you know, when you have your tenant, make sure you keep it to yourself because there's a lot of powerful people in this town, and when they realize that you have something good, I wouldn't put it past anyone to try and get it taken away from you. And I kind of laughed at it and said, this is what, I have a contract, that's impossible. Obviously, I gave the town $50,000 of non-refundable money, and low and behold, no one came out to, to, to fight the resolution, no one came out to fight the adoption. Months went by, and it wasn't until that I had brought a tenant about that these issues started to arise, whether it was wanting to save the house that was on the property, which I was willing to work with anyone in regards to moving it. Ms. Veronica can tell you that I had made numerous attempts to try and move the, the home, if we could put it in the library property behind there. From a construction standpoint, I know physically I could make that happen, but I got to this point and wasn't even afforded that option because of a clerical error. And my question is now, I have done a year's worth of work, spent countless amounts of money, and created value in this property by bringing a tenant and signing a tenant. So now when the town puts it up for rebids and makes money off of this clerical error, how is that legal? That you guys are able to then, you couldn't get, at 2.9 million, I looked at it, and it wasn't worth any, I couldn't, I couldn't make anything possibly work. When it was put out for a million and a half, and just in regards to the notices, I actually found the, the property on Realtor.com, which is open to the public. It was listed on the multiple listing site for 106 days. It was on the government deal site for over 86 days. It was very well noticed in regards to the resolutions. It really is something that I can't grasp that this can be done to me at this point, and I'm basically being told to go kick rocks. And I just want to know, with this all being done, and me doing all of that, increasing the value, the township could not get that number at first, but now that there's other bidders that are going to get involved and bid this higher, knowing that other people are interested in it, I just want to know what happens when the township has a, has a financial windfall from it at my detriment. Mr. Connors, can you tell me?
I'll wait until after you're done with all, is that the only question you have?
I mean, again, I really would just, I, I want to submit my contract to you guys just so it's on the record, that I have a formal contract.
Would you let Mr. Connors speak to you?
I can, well, I advise the governing body.
To be honest with you, I really was disheartening. Mr. McDonald, Mr. Kennis, you both know that I, I was, had nothing but good faith to this township. I grew up in this area, my mother lived on Sunset Avenue, I, I, I started this process in a way that was, how could I help the town? And this is the reciprocation that I got. So in general, it being disconcerting that I was told this two weeks ago, and before Mr. Connors could even get back to me, it was put on this agenda, an ad was done, a date was set for the new auction, without even letting me, as the person who has a contract, know of that. So that seems a little strange, and again, the fact that all of these issues came up, and then I started getting anonymous violations from the DEP, I had the Ocean County Health Commissioner, she can tell you that the Ocean County Health Commissioner came after me because there was a barrel of dirt on the property, and.
We had a resident complain about it, so we had to answer to that.
Sure, but it, but it, there was nothing contaminated.
No, no, we know that, we told the people that.
Who can't have a barrel of dirt on the property? But I had, they said that there were multiple complaints against me anonymously to the Environmental Protection, so the state got involved, the Ocean County Health Commissioner got involved. It very much felt like I was being squeezed to get out of this deal where, like I said, I felt like I was afforded all the rights of a contract and acted in nothing but good faith, but now the, this happens, and based on a clerical error, the township could have a windfall of money, and I lose all of my money. That seemingly seems very, other than unethical, it almost seems illegal. And I'd like to know why, why it was chosen so quick that you had to have this resolution added today.
Okay, so can Mr. Connors answer you?
Please. Well, Mayor members of the governing body, Mr. DeGeorge is represented by counsel, and as such, I'm not able to speak to Mr. DeGeorge about this matter because there's been an indication that there may be a lawsuit that's involved. However, I can address the governing body in light of some of the comments that have been made. Notwithstanding Mr. George's good heritage in this community, his hard work, his good faith in attempting to address issues that might be concerned to the residents of Tangium, we cannot ignore the fact that the law is the law. And the law is quite clear that on the sale of municipal property, that it's required that it be published in a newspaper circulating within the municipality. Now, it is known, the fact that there was a resolution that was adopted by this governing body setting forth a minimum bid of two point nine million dollars. It is also a fact that there was an ordinance that was adopted, which would require a publication of that ordinance that authorized the sale. It is a fact that there are multiple listing services that provided advertisement. It is a fact that the auctioneer also advertised. But the one advertisement, the only advertisement, that's required within the statute and the regulations, is that it be published in a newspaper circulated within the municipality, um, where the property is located. And that was not done. And if something were to be looked at as being illegal, it seems to me that the acknowledgement that the law was not followed, but notwithstanding that we would continue with a contract that would otherwise be void as a result of the violation of the law. Additionally, when you take a, a publication with a minimum bid of two point nine million, and without the required publication, then sell it for a million and a half, I think raises more questions about the fairness of the property.
Please let him finish.
I'm just telling the governing body what the facts are, and it's my legal advice to this governing body, notwithstanding that the contract has been entered into, is the fact that the law has to be followed, and only a court can determine whether the municipality can proceed with the contract that it has. Otherwise, is again, I have advised this governing body upon the determination and discovery that the publication was not done appropriately, that this is the appropriate action. Now, um, the contract purchaser, his attorney will be advised, I've had conversations with that attorney. The attorney had been advised that the governing body was considering a resolution authorizing another auction. The request was made that this governing body delay by two weeks the passage of that resolution. I advise the governing body, as a responsibility as legal counsel, to present anything of opposing legal counsel, and the governing body has a resolution and feels that it must act forth with. And so, that is the reason why any other issues that you have, rightfully they have, are gonna have to be addressed in another form.
So, and Mr. Connors, trust me, I, I respect you, and-
And I do you, Mr. George, you've been absolutely wonderful through this process.
Again, I'm just, it, it just seems to be that, you know, it was enough to be like villainized, that I, that I was trying to take these buildings away that had value to people, where I was a hundred percent on board of working something out, I, I, I felt like I did everything possible to benefit the town, do something good, and make some, when no one else wanted those properties for six months, when they were just two dilapidated buildings, I didn't hear a peep from anybody. But the moment I went to go make my applications, and people knew that I had a tenant that had a big name, well, there, next thing you know, everything came out of the woodwork, and, and within a matter of two weeks, we went from me submitting applications to rushing to have this put on this resolution for tonight. So, once again, I just couldn't understand why the rush, why the rush to put this out tonight? That puts me in an even worse position. What, I mean, giving me nothing of like, any, like, respect of a contract that I have, I don't understand it.
This, I don't mean to ignore all that you're saying, um, but because of legal reasons, this cannot be discussed, that's-
You can't answer that question?
I, the governing body has been advised, based on the facts that were presented-
Sure, but you could've waited, why not, why not try and figure out a solution?
We, figuring out a solution is the responsibility of legal counsel.
Sure.
And I have done that, and the, and my recommendation, my advice to the governing body has been given, and I stand behind it. And there's nobody benefits from delaying what has to be done.
The township benefits. The township benefits financially, that's the bottom line, is that at my detriment, the township will have a greater gain for, for, for basically ignoring a contract. Again, I thought this was still the United States, where we had contract law, and that these laws were made for a reason, for this exact reason, that you couldn't have a contract, and people just say, "Sorry, we're not gonna abide by it anymore." Whether it's a clerical error, or whatever it might be, I still can't grasp that concept.
Once again, I would advise the governing body that contracts are important, there are contracts which are void, there are contracts which are considered voidable. This is what I consider to be a void contract. You cannot violate the law and get beyond it by simply holding the protection of a contract, okay? Because that would throw-
So, what about that I was acting on the basis that the town was-
Because it would throw on, it would throw on, on its head, turn on its head, the bidding laws and the laws of the state of New Jersey, simply by entering into a contract and then holding it up and saying, "It doesn't matter that there's a procedural flaw." The only entity, the only authority that can make this call, in my view, is a court.
And the ordinance that lists the provisions for advertisement also had in the provisions electronic advertisement, which, again, I have three different things that show it's been on for hundreds of days before the auction, that people saw that it was for that price, when the auction was, and, once again, I, it came to me based on a regular website that everyone can look at. So there's nothing that protects me in that end of things, that there was electronic notice that can't even be considered? And, and is there any kind of limitations on appeal periods, where, as time goes by and so much time, and, and I, I'm relying on, you know, to my detriment, detrimental reliance on me doing things honestly and spending my life savings, and thinking that I'm doing the right thing because I, I have a contract, isn't there a certain period of time that once you can get to that time, the appeal can, is, is looked at in a certain way? I mean, I understand that this was brought up by email by a resident, I, I don't know if there are hired people at play that are involved in doing this, but-
Now, I, let me just-
Was there anyone legally that came forward?
I'm gonna keep switching right over to our attorney.
There's, there's, there's nothing in what the governing body is doing that is attempt to be underhanded or to take advantage of the circumstance. We had a conscientious, good-minded, hard-working citizen who asked for certain documents, and, but for that, we may not have discovered the issue. But it came to light, and it was presented to me, and I advised the governing body accordingly. Now, Mr. DeGeorge, you're under advice of legal counsel, that much I know, because I spoke to an individual and you on the phone at the same time, who identified yourself as, identified himself as your legal counsel, and has been representing you up to this point. Those questions that you've asked, and the comments you've made are very heartfelt, okay? Believe me, I wish that we could proceed forward, um, but these are questions that you have to get guidance from your legal counsel. I can only guide the governing body here.
And that's why I'm not asking for legal advice, but certain things like-
You're asking good, you're asking good, reasonable questions.
Just certain things like, why was it rushed to get on today?
Because we have to cure a violation of the law.
Of course, but again, it was, there was no legal counsel, or there was no legal complaint filed, was there?
There is nobody that's served by the delay in time. And if your concern is that others might bid-
I know that they are now.
Well, do you think more time is gonna create less bidders?
No, no, but I'm just saying, the, the fact that it needed to be rushed to be done today-
Well, it is what it is.
Gives me no time to even try and work something out.
I've advised the governing body, and I would suggest that no further comments be made at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm waiting for him to sit down, so-
Listen, I appreciate you guys taking a moment to talk to me, I'm sorry if I get a little emotional.
Thank you, Mr. George. No, we don't feel that way at all, I don't.
You can understand, if something's that-
We understand completely.
We understand completely, Mr. DeGeorge.
You know, I- Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that'd like to speak?
Fine. Don't, don't touch the mic, turn it up, turn it up, hopefully that'll work.
Good evening.
I think you could raise the standard to the bottom.
A little knob right there.
It's just the end where the wire comes in.
There he comes, there he comes.
You can touch all of this, just not this.
Just raise it up for him.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that.
Uh, good evening, mayor, and committee members. Mr. DeGeorge, um, first of all, I hope the Lacy Township government will give you your fifty thousand dollars back, and I just wanna say that this is what we would call an illegal sale, because it was never authorized, and that was the problem. And I happen to be the person who happened to find that the resolution for the sale does not exist. And as you know, you probably have seen that I've been working with the team to try to save this property, I do have a problem with why they're putting it up for auction again when there's been public outcry not to sell this property. And this is a perfect opportunity for them now to just say, you know, "It's an illegal sale, we couldn't go through with it," which obviously it is, "and the property needs to stay for the purposes that it was given to the town."
Have we worked with you? Do whatever you want.
Well, I'm sorry.
I just feel like to say, we can't have conversation going on in the public.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
I understand. Um, I, I don't really care how it gets resolved, the problem issue is that we have facilities that are owned by public property by the citizens of Lacy Township, that is, Community Hall and the Warden House, and, um, there are a team of us who have been working diligently to try to save these properties for the historical significance, because there's very little left in this town of any historical significance. And yes, I do my research, and I'm very diligent at doing that.
I'm being ear. Sorry.
Excuse me, I just have to tell you, Mr. DeGeorge, we can't have you calling out from the audience, thank you.
To answer your question, sir, as we were going through and researching the timeline, which we just recently finished, I think it was two weeks ago, the item was noticed then, a little more than that time ago, I'm sorry, it wasn't intentional, I don't know you personally, I feel terrible about the situation that you're in, that has nothing to do with me, the contract that was done, but what I'm saying to you is that if everything had been done properly, I guess your sale would've gone through, but it didn't go, it didn't work out that way, I don't know who exactly is to blame for that situation. It was you?
I'll take the blame, I'm telling you.
Okay, all right, so, um, that's the situation, I would really appreciate if you would, um, second-guess the idea, or rethink exactly, actually putting it up for auction again, because now we have the opportunity where you can keep the property, and that was the plan, is that we would hopefully be able to keep this property, and maybe turn it around and use it for the things that we, you know, maybe we could put, um, the, that works back in their building again, and maybe Community Hall could be used exactly for what it was meant to be used for. Anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, sir, and to, for the public to understand what's going on here, um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
See, now make a motion to close the floor.
Second.
Hall and Paper.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
Hall and Paper.
All right.
All right, we're out of here.
Good job.